All right, in seven past seven on this day of June. Yeah, twenty twenty four, like the order. Very dear member of the board. Dean Vincent, but have we? Being with us. It's still in the nest, so God bless him, and I'd like to have him. With silence for prayer for the evening. Anyone else have some words for Dean?
Mr. Smiling face.
Shocking.
You know, I love that woman like another song. I talk all the time.
All right. That being said, we did have an election and all from Patty back to the board. We have not met since the election. Like to organize the reorganization of the board. King is king is mine, no longer here, possibly a secretary. Here. Just a thought on, we pretty much have a a continual board leader over the years, just talking with some of the members separately. Either I maybe I'd like to make a motion, maybe. Start with a one year. Rather than each person getting a chance to crack at the helm and just wanted to discuss that.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. So the board does that, so.
Hey, I don't know if I need a motion to change that policy or we just, we just both.
No, or can handle whatever method they thinks appropriate.
All right, that being said, I'd like to like have a vote for the board chair, so how you want it? Do that. Would you go around on the table? I don't think it's a secret, but I want to nominate Don Page as board chair.
Second.
I'll nominate him.
I as well, I agree, second, if it's only for a year.
It's only for you. But then we'll need a secretary also. Secretary, believe. Patty. Vice Chair.
I'm not sure that there is much to do unless there's a need for it. Right, maybe you have a.
I can do secretary.
Okay, I don't know. Bill as vice chair or vice chair person.
Second that.
Oh, David.
Hi.
I accept, thank you.
Then I nominate Patsy for secretaries.
I second that. Oh, they, I, I. Little swampy, but it's good.
Thank you, John, for serving us ultimate chair for, yeah, many years. The only, the only thing now where it is just.
He has represented the CMR PC, that was always Dean in the past, so. Okay.
Do we need a motion or is that just going?
Oh, I think, yeah, formally.
Make a motion that John serves.
I. There's one other question. Yeah, if they could see though. Or alternate.
Yes, that's what we'll need to do, and I guess the best because it's now past the elections. As we would have a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen to interview a person of, you know, who's interested in being on the board, so the both the planning board and the board of selectmen can interview that person to either recommend to say. Oh, it's the plan would hands the interview part?
And then hence the mechanic.
They want to have joint meeting to nominate that person. Okay, I'm.
So, yeah, so we'll have to have the town clerk advertise.
Yeah, if you, if you know anybody that might have interest in the board, you know, we actually Alicia Dyson says you can come back to be an alternate, but she doesn't want to be a regular. Can't commit all her time to the board.
And that's, that's not to have an alternate that's not present in front of the meetings and, yeah, to itself, but.
We'll advertise and see who will get.
Yeah, so if we go that way, then we'll take it from there.
Kind of find somebody new, but there's probably the, the same old people that follow.
Yep, that would be a one year appointment or at least on the next election, as it is, what it is. Okay. John, all right, thank you, John. Um, you guys are gonna need to help me out here. I'm not experienced with this, so you, I got, I got good experience over the outside. So, yeah, so uh, do, 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 so we'll start with seven o'clock, it being seven o'clock, public hearing for Valley Green Road definitive subdivision plan forty-four Old Worcester Road. Um, I'll read the public notice. In accordance with MGL chapter forty-one, section eighty-one P, pursuant to an order of remand of the Massachusetts Land Court dated April third, twenty twenty-four. In Valley Green Row Incorporated at all versus the town of Charlton Planning Board at all case number nineteen. M I S C zero, 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 one, five, one, R B F, in pursuit to the Charlton Planning Board subdivision regulation section three dot, three dot twelve. Charlton Planning Board will hold a remote public hearing airing on Wednesday, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, seven P M via Zoom meeting ID number two, one, one, two, nine, three, two, two, five, seven, and in person to the planning board office at thirty-seven Main Street, Charlton. Mass oh, one, five, oh, seven, on the application of Valley Green Row sixteen Osgood Street, North Andover. Uh, oh, one, eight, four, five, requesting approval of definitive subdivision plan at forty-four Old West Road, Charlton, Mass. Oh, one, five, oh, seven, assessor map thirty-six, block C, lot ten. The proposed subdivision subdivision consists of two lots. Excuse me, and a roadway with a cul-de-sac approximately hundred and seventy feet in length. The applicant has requested several waivers from the Board of Regulations. The property is owned by Charlton Orchards Group, L L C, forty-four Old West Road, Charlton Map. Mass and zoned agriculture rural residential. This meeting of the Charlton Planning Board will be conducted in person and via remote participation. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public in our parties with a right and or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Town of Charlton website at townofcharlton.net. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen, watch the meeting remotely may do so in the following manner. Video participation through Zoom U S two, one, one, two, nine, three, two, two, five, seven. Meeting ID two, one, one, two, nine, three, two, two, five, seven, phone access one, six, four, six, five, five, eight, eight, six, five, six. Copies of the subdivision application and related documents are available for inspection at the planning board office and town clerk's office during regular business hours. The application is also posted on the town website under the planning board. Any person interested in or wishing to be heard should appear at that time and place designated. So the Rossman scheme is the chair at the time. Look, so, um, so we have counsel here from, from Charlton, uh, counsel was covering the settlement agreement, uh, and the subdivision approval process. Um, did, do you want to talk about it now, or do you want me to go into some of the specifics?
I, I'm, I'm happy to give the board and the members of the public a little bit of background if that's helpful.
Sure, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, so, um, as folks may be aware, uh, there was pending litigation for some time involving the planning board, Valley Green Grow and the Benjamins with respect to a subdivision application that was filed uh, by the Benjamins and Charlton Orchards, uh, along with Valley Green Grow for the purpose of establishing a zoning freeze for the property in connection with their, uh, plans and, and their project for a cannabis cultivation facility at the project. Uh, folks may recall that the, uh, planning board had denied that application for subdivision approval. There was also a separate application for site plan approval. This remand hearing deals just with the subdivision approval. Uh, the litigation proceeded on the subdivision application in the land court. V G G appealed that after the planning board's decision denying subdivision approval. Uh, that went through the land court process, uh, for a while. There were also some separate proceedings. I was not counsel for the planning board in connection with those, uh, involving the site plan approval, but specific to uh, the request for subdivision approval. The planning board and the Board of Selectmen on behalf of the town, the select board entered into a settlement agreement with the Benjamins and with Valley Green Grow. The settlement agreement was done, uh, some time ago. And as part of that settlement agreement, it, uh, required that the parties submit a request to the land court to have the project come back to the planning board on a remand. And, uh, and the board would consider a approving the subdivision plan. Settlement agreement also included restrictions and limitations on the size of a revised a revised cannabis cultivation facility. As it turns out, uh, Charlton, uh, excuse me, Valley Green Grow and the Benjamins are not moving forward with that project. And, uh, we had originally requested a remand from the land court thinking that we were going to approve the subdivision approval, which was part of that settlement agreement. That is now not going to happen because we have received a request from the Benjamins and Valley Green Grow is deferring to the Benjamins request to withdraw the application. So as a result of that, assuming that the board, uh, moves to and votes to, uh, accept the withdrawal, the subdivision application will be deemed withdrawn, uh, and that will, and we will so notify the uh, the land court, and then my expectation would be that the as a result of the withdrawal of the application, that that litigation then gets dismissed. So a little bit different than what we had planned, but the net of it is, uh, that the applicant has requested to withdraw and the board has the uh, authority to accept that request and close out this matter.
Good. Good, thank you, Ms. McKay. Um, so it looks like we need a, a vote to or a motion to uh, withdraw the application approval. Withdraw the application and approval.
I make the motion to accept the request with, um, withdrawal for the V G subdivision.
Say for forty-four Old West Road. Second. Okay, give a motion and second. We have discussion. Hearing no discussion. Wait. Do we take discussion? Um, I don't think is this, uh, it is a, a public hearing. We can, so is there anybody from the public that wishes to discuss this matter?
So it's not going in?
So it's, it's, it's not going in? Okay, um. Make a, well, first we have to close the public hearing. Do you have a motion to close the public hearing? Motion and second, do we have a vote? Are those in favor?
I.
It's unanimous. Um, now we have a motion. You want to make that motion again, or?
Make a motion to accept the request for withdrawal. Subdivision.
What do you call this, right? It's second. Do we have a motion a second? We have a vote?
Mr. Chairman, just, just a small housekeeping item. I had a little bit, uh, trouble hearing this ride like, but there's actually two properties at issue in the subdivision application. There's seven L Turner Road and forty-four Old Worcester Road.
Okay.
In the order of remand and also, uh, should be in your, um, uh, in your public notice as well.
Okay, I don't have it on my packet, but, uh, it, it is. It is there. I don't know if it's in the. Oh, there you go. So it's forty-four, oh, forty-four Old Worcester Road is the, uh, is the only thing that's on here. It's forty-four Old West Road, map thirty-six, blocks, block C, lot ten.
Okay, I have in the order of remand both ad- addresses.
Okay, what is the other address? Do we need that on the public hearing, or is that?
Seven L Turner Road.
Seven L Turner Road.
So this is, this is consistent to the order of remand, so I, I think we're good for notice purposes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I make a motion to accept the withdrawal, um, for the subdivision, um, from seven L Turner Road and forty-four Old Worcester Road.
We've motioned a second. Are those in favor?
I.
I, I unanimous. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Close is that, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Have a great day, Mr. McKay. Thank you.
Okay, I'll log off. Thanks very much.
Okay, that first order of business, okay, uh, seven, ten, public hearing for civil special permit and doggy daycare at ten North Sturbridge Road. Uh, lot number eleven A dash C four and eleven A dash C seven. In accordance with sections two hundred dash three, two, two hundred dash seven I D and two hundred dash seven dot two. The Charlton zoning bylaw, the Charlton Planning Board will hold a remote public hearing on Wednesday, June, June fifth, uh, twenty twenty-four, seven P M via Zoom meeting ID number two, one, one, two, nine, three, two, two, five, seven, in person meeting in thirty-seven Main Street, Charlton, Mass. On the request of Brent and in Salute, salute, okay. Uh, ninety-six North Sullivan Road, Charlton, Mass, Mike, one, oh, one, one, five, oh, seven. For a special permit application for doggy daycare and existing in an existing train station building. No new structures are proposed. The property has been used commercially and was previously used as a motorcycle club meeting place and for storage. The property contains approximately one point seven five acres in the R forty district. Dog kennels can be permitted with an approved special permit. The property is located at ten North Sturbridge Road. The property ID is assessors map eleven A, block C, lots four and seven, and is zone residential low density R forty. This meeting, the Charlton Planning Board will be conducted in person and via remote participation. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public in our parties for the right or requirement to attend this meeting may be found on the Town of Charlton website at, uh, W W W dot townofcharlton dot net. This meeting, members of the public who wish to listen and watch the meeting may do so in the following manner. Video participation at zoom dot U S two, one, one, two, nine, three, two, two, five, seven, meeting ID two, one, one, two, nine, three, two, two, five, seven, phone access one, six, four, six, five, five, eight, eight, six, five, six. Copies of the site plan application are available for inspection at the planning board office and the town's clerk office during regular business hours. The application is also posted on the town website under planning board. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at that time and place designated. John Smith signed this one, vice chair. Um, okay, so do we have more information, um, open planning board, and I, I assume engineering, or did you like to talk about the project a little bit? Okay. Can you discuss the project a little bit and, and what you're doing and, and whatnot? Just the doggy daycare.
You got twenty-four kennels.
Okay.
So we can.
Indoor, outdoor.
Yeah, I've got an outdoor. I've got an outdoor in the back.
The outdoor has shipping containers, which are very large.
Soundproof.
Sound blocking, that's soundproof, but.
Yeah, sound blocking, I should say, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Square. Or on the, this. Are those on the plan? Are those shown?
You can show it to the area of the fence. Yeah, the area of the outside here.
The enclosed play yard?
Yes.
And, and you're saying those will be lined with, uh, storage. I see.
We have another facility on Route twenty, and it works very well, but they, they're not kind of all over the this would sound like her.
There's a question, not to, uh, community, right, meaning.
Well, this is just an existing building with some additions to the outside.
Since the building has always been new.
We've been, like, down, down, they have. Even there, yeah, give it a good once over.
Building supply at one point, wasn't it?
Something, yeah, listen, this.
That's a long time ago.
For Charlton originally, yes, basically, it's a depot, train station that came buildings in Charlton, uh, commercial buildings, I think, when the trains started, we came and picked up the goods to all with your farm and build your farm.
Any, any questions from the board? To this?
So that outdoor play yard. That's where we container. Where the square then, seventy by eighty-two, and that's all containers on it.
How many, how many employees?
Well, right now, I mean, yeah, you know, we're only going to need a couple.
And how many parking spots do we have?
There's multiple spots over there at that, so.
Okay.
It's, it's, and it's, it's kind of down that road, and it's, it's, it's pretty private down in there, like. I've been down there a while, but very open.
And so there's like sixteen shown on the plan. But there's more potential.
There would be more, yeah.
Usually when people do.
We have to have extra parking for the, the train viewers that come down on quite a regular basis. We're surprised with that.
Hmm, good. Judge admissions.
And so what's in, what's the use of the building now? It's these three uses, two apartments. It's in for a social club.
There's nothing in it.
So it's, the apartments are empty now, at least.
I have one lease.
One lease, and it's upstairs from this outline.
Yeah, yeah. 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 Not really a lease.
Yeah.
Well, the kennels will be on the back side of them. Kennels be inside the garage.
It's a big shop area, garage, L shaped, in there.
So no changes to the, that bigger space, the existing building space?
None.
Is, what is in there, wide open?
Inside, empty garage, yeah, just warehouse basement, all the warehouse basement.
And is that going to be used as part of this business too, inside that opening?
The garage will be the kennels inside.
Okay, well, it looks like, I was. Okay. Former garage. The existing building, where the large, this area here.
That is, that's upstairs, yeah, that's.
Unless it's upstairs. So there's nothing, no other uses in this building other than storage or, or wherever this, this section is here.
Right.
Okay. So also, I, I will say that my only concern is just being the residential area. I mean, we've had issues in, in the recent past of of disturbances within residential areas with doggy daycares and things like that.
Not far from there.
Okay.
Um, and again, I guess we, we've gone to all of our neighbors.
Okay.
And, uh, we told everyone what we're doing. Yeah, no. Ever, most, everyone is, is very excited that we've cleaned the place up and, and, you know, planted trees and kept landscape up down there. There's, um, some historic signs from the, uh, store committee here for the depot kind of thing, so kind of make pay that and landscape around that also. We like to keep the history of Charlton here and away with that building.
Hmm.
No emails or comments from any of the bosses or anything like that? I think, no, no emails or.
No, we've had no comments at all, definitely no negative comments.
Any signage? On the building or around the building, or no? No advertising at all to know where it is? They don't, if they don't know where it is, it did. Yeah, okay, that's, that's what I was, I was asking, so that goes to a different department, but nothing that shows on this plan where you would have signage. Um, do we want to add, have them add that? Is it something that's necessary? I mean, it's, it's.
Easier.
We have to get a building.
I'd have to go, that's a different.
Hmm.
I just saw in the room. Have you talked to? Animal control.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, and they almost have to wait for this process. But we work, we work with those.
Yeah.
Yeah. The animal control officers did a purpose me to find out, you know, what's proper process to go to to get approval for the dog kennel. So she's aware of the project.
And she would come down every, uh, once a year for inspection.
Oh, definitely. Uh, what, well, what are you expecting for clients?
How many?
Yeah.
I'm only going to be twenty-four dogs.
Okay.
I'm not doing it night, I'm not doing it weekends.
Okay. It was just strictly day. Hours of operation.
It's thirty-two seconds.
Yeah, they drop off.
Good. How do we, how do we handle noise complaints or, or complaints from neighbors around? I mean, that's something that as a board, we've had to deal with in the past, being the residential area. Um, I mean, have you spoken to the people across the tracks on, on Curtis Hill?
I have, yeah, back, back today.
You're knocking on doors?
Um, no, actually, she came over.
Okay.
Um, she lives in the, in the old church house there, looking at Holden, and, um, she's, she's excited about it. You know, you've got the train going by there, you know, you won't worry about noise, you know, the train's not, you know, wow, wow. Uh, but a- as far as of the dogs, we kind of, you know, we have a facility already. We, we, we know and, you know, we're not gonna come a nuisance to the neighborhood. We went through that.
Monday to week or five.
Yeah, yeah.
Monday to Friday.
Yeah, yeah. That way, you know, when everybody's out barbecuing on Sunday afternoon, we all right.
Um, we could, I mean, that's, it's, the hours are not in the application, but we can definitely make that, you know.
You should eight to six.
From, from six thirty till about six, six o'clock.
The security.
And get the people in time to get out of work and come get their dog.
Yeah.
You know, like drop it off before they get to work. Some people, you know.
Do you have a lease on the building or?
I own it, we own it.
Yep.
I mean, you can make that a condition, those hours, no weekends. Do you?
Do you have any plans for overnight stays?
We're not going to overnight stay.
Okay. So Monday through Friday, six thirty, yeah.
No, we had an emergency where somebody, like, gosh, you know, you know, we, we may have a dog, but, but, but we're not.
So.
We've got a lot of it that's going on at this. We have plenty there.
So our business. Six thirty drop off. It's not, the dogs aren't going out to play at this time, they're being brought in, so they would be inside directly at that place since the beginning.
But that's, most of our neighbors have already gone to work. We know almost all.
What's the main entrance you see for, for public and your employees into the building?
Right down the front is, is the. Right down the front, there's there's a main.
So there's two overhead doors that side is the main.
And there's a man door on the on the. Inside of the building.
On the left.
Uh, yeah, you're coming in the driveway.
Yeah.
Left side is a.
Like, and then there's another man door between the two garage doors.
Yeah, it's usually just a handoff, you know, you have to go for the door, the door, they hand the dog off and.
Yeah. So what, what do we need to know about, um, you know, accessible that trick? In compliance.
Well, we think of a commercial, that would be. Why, but as far as I've been told by the building inspector, we're not. So I don't think I fall under.
It's not, you know, the commercial zone, but it's a, it's a commercial business that. Wires compliance.
Right, I mean, at the building is is the fires, you know, exercise, everything is everything's fine.
So will that fall under building inspector or this this would? The building inspector have access, since this is a. New building, new business in that location.
The building inspector would have to.
Would you have to get a permit? Such a good use.
Construction walls.
Well, it's it's, it's a commercial business. Well.
Businesses in town, right, the people's houses that right the street that. Same thing, so that's why I wouldn't just.
Different requirements based on.
Will be held with standard higher than.
Surely.
Everybody else is being held to.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay.
I, but do you, but customers will come in and drop off their dog and pick up their dog?
At the door.
You have sales, right, you're not sure, great, so then it's a retail. Business, basically. So the retail business triggers clients with ADA. You know, all of those, and I think the building commissioner would be interested in those, hails, you know, ramps. Sidewalks.
So even though it's in a residential district, it's still a commercial use of that residential business. Okay, so it's it's allowed in there.
A a different. Determination on that.
So it's it's. A business or a party, a home. Business either way.
I mean, there was another, again, another facility somewhat similar to this, where they had to be ADA, buying everything too. They were.
That was different because that was in their own home.
Yeah.
They lived there, that was in their home. This is a specific purpose for this. Building, so I think that's the differentiation.
I mean, because I just wanted to. Eight, we are a commercial building.
Oh.
Great, I'll go commercial, but if really just a residential building, then I fall under a different category. Um, and not, I don't have to comply with that. For those ADA.
Right, it's definitely a gray area, maybe you should. Penis's opinion on it. He's the zoning enforcement officer.
For ten years or something, I think.
Yeah.
Provides the certificate of occupancy like.
But, but.
Yeah, he is, he is the zoning enforcement officer, so his his zoning.
No, absolutely.
Keep in mind, if we then confer with him and wait for his review, this.
Continue this public hearing until our next meeting, so we we can discuss it with. With Kurt.
Well, I like that, yeah, no. But that's, that's your board, you know, you guys make the decision, I don't think it's. I mean, it's, it's.
I think it's good for you to, then he will have bulleted list like, I need this and this and this, and then you have something to respond to, just close it out. If that's the case, or he'll come back and say, it looks good and it conforms to this and this and this, so.
Right.
I think a determination would be good, or else we'll. Could go forward.
Correctly here.
Could go back and forth to several. We're just, that's what we're praying, that's, yeah.
Well, you know, I don't think we, we make it several meetings, but we made it.
Yeah, we the one that determine whether it's.
And. I'm I'm concerned just because we've done this in residential neighborhood before, it didn't go well. Not that this is much different, it is a commercial.
I'm just, I'm not looking to be held with standard here.
Nope, may consider doing maybe a a a one year approval. See how things go.
Be great.
And then after that year, as long as there's no issues. That's kind of something like that, six months to a year, just maybe six months, just to. Get you through the summer and and into business, quicker, quicker, and do a final approval, people that way, just to make sure that that there is no disruptions in the neighborhood. And and everything still.
The faucet turned on here.
Um, so I mean, that, I mean, that's another option we can do is we can do a six month approval. Uh, while Kurt weighs in on it. Um. And then. We can adjust it in six months, or or we can wait another meeting, it's up to whoever. There's a couple of options.
Good thing now, it's the time of year where, you know, windows are gonna be open and everything, so. It it's gonna be a problem while there, but it's sooner than later, you know?
Hate to have to, you know. Not permanent approval that, or come back. I would, I would comply, I mean, if Kurt has. We're gonna get right on it, we're not gonna try and pull around with this, yeah.
I don't think he'd give you a certificate of occupancy to open the business unless you were relying to what his needs were anyways. But, but at least it'll get you moving.
And at the very least, it's time on by six.
Absolutely right about the summer and the windows being open and.
Maybe if we did ninety days, had a.
Yeah, but it's, I think it needs a little bit more than ninety days, I mean, anybody can behave well for ninety days. And it's, it's up to you whether we want to continue, ac- actually, we can open it up to the public if there's any. Like it up, open it up to the public, if anybody has comments on this, this consideration for for special permit or. Nothing? Okay.
I just have one question, Bob Berenger, Curtis Hill Road.
Okay.
Um. Does the, I'm gonna say, I know you talked to the two girls, I I know them very well, but right before that house, the log cabin is right in the back of your property.
Yeah, I talked with her.
You did?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
She was one of the first ones I went to. My closest day was her, Karen, right next door.
Hmm.
Um, Karen, actually, I would be glad, I thought she sent it in with.
Okay, no, I'm just. Yeah, but I, I, you know, I think I'm bringing the speedo with the dog. That's not the problem, but.
Sure, you know, and I'm sure we're good neighbors.
So I understand, I I believe you are, I've seen the work that you've done down there, I'm not, I'm just saying it, somebody else, you know.
Sure.
I have no problem with.
Um, it's, and it's, it's a business you plan on running for a while, it's not something you just get up and running and sell to somebody else, because. We know you, we understand.
And that's why we we decided, hey, you know, this is great, we've got some.
Plenty of business.
We like something a little more exclusive and a little more private. So when this came about. Said, okay, hey, let's, you know, we're gonna try this, let's see if we can pull this.
Leave the public hearing open, or do you want to vote on approval tonight? Anybody wants to make a motion?
Tonight. Forward and. I think there's a couple of conditions, so make a motion to uh. Approve the um. Doggy daycare ten North Sturridge Road. Um, for a period of a hundred and eighty days probationary period of a hundred and eighty days. With the hours as six thirty AM to six PM. Daycare only.
Monday to Friday.
Monday through Friday. With with a condition of building inspector review and a.
Um, to get, I'm sorry, I was like, you got the six month.
Hundred and eighty days.
Hundred and eighty days. It's like, if we have a motion in a second, we need discussion. During N C N, do you have a vote?
Would you have a hundred and eight in those days, would you have the dogs? Do you have the clients that fulfill that, so they're representing.
Our other business has waiting.
Okay, okay, so I actually want to order, we need to close the public hearing first, okay. Motion to close the public here, sec. Motion, the second close of public hearing. Votes.
I.
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 unanimous, okay. Now, we have a motion on the table.
Yeah.
Before, we have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? So, okay, and do we have a vote? Hey, I.
I.
I. All approved unanimously, thank you.
Great, thank you very much, yeah, thank you.
Um, you got the conditions?
Yeah.
Thank you. Good luck.
It's come on down to see us.
It just come down to watch the train go by.
Pot out station.
All right, uh, we have a public hearing continued seven ten PM for GM Properties LLC. Villages multi-family units at thirty five North Main Street. Uh, assistant, thirty five dot C dot nine.
We had the uh.
Oh, uh. Uh, is that on?
Yeah, it's.
Okay.
Seven oh five.
Okay. Oh, I missed that, okay, no, that was. You have the same one I have?
Oh, you don't have.
That's July.
Not on yours?
Oh, that's July, I'm just, well, all right, look at the. I must have it here somewhere, oh, all right, oh, there it is, sorry, sorry, apologize. Uh, seven to five Blue Water Bay Development LLC take action of Amazon Facility Site, Shorty Bond, thirty five Sturridge Road. Seriously. So what's?
But you have a um. Blue Water had requested a. Site bond there.
Your request was on the hearings.
Yeah, they're hoping to get a, they want to get a temporary CEO on the building. Um, prior to finishing the site work, so Graves Engineering to go up, determine what. Site work is still left to be done on the property.
Okay.
He's given us the bond estimate, um, Blue Water has agreed to that bond estimate and is. Ready to post a bond for the amount in the estimate there.
Okay, based on the aforementioned, uh, so please, uh, there's been the twenty percent administration continuity added to the estimate total for inspections, engineering inflation. You have a cost calculated using the down wage rate, that's the rate of an ask, the achieving. Pricing for all projects bid between two thousand twenty three and March two thousand. The estimation includes only onsite work and not offsite work, meaning group twenty seven. So, based on the aforementioned observations and assumptions, the construction cost estimated total is. One million three hundred ninety four thousand. Four hundred and seventy nine and twenty cents. Twenty cents. Okay. Okay.
Scope of work is good, yeah, that's the line.
Yeah, they, they need access into the building to start. Finish setting up and operating it, putting everything for that, they need the temporary CO, which is why. They're handling it this way. Hope to bond for the site work, and then they can access the building and start using it.
Lee, what's your, your plan on on completing?
Within ninety days.
Within ninety days, yeah. You want to get rid of this building first?
Gotta go. Joe? Uh, Joe's on vacation back on Thursday. But no, uh, I think he's seeking direction from the.
Yeah. What about the water?
Water. Water has been reviewed by Graves, been under one rain event, they're looking for a more aggressive rain event. They couldn't make a determination.
Yeah, I I actually received. I received a port report from Graves stating what Mr. Blackwell just said, so. They're waiting for another heavy rain event.
Is that still, it's still up?
And it is. So we've hydrocated, um, the. Lawn has been a little bit more aggressive. Right. We hope that that. Empers that a bit. Likely a pre-existing condition of sorts. I don't want to make a determination of Graves to go up and actually put. Any kind of material in there and. Adversely impact that, we um. We're planning a hydro seating his backyard tomorrow. We probably will postpone that due to that rain. He is determined for an outcome from you guys. And in terms of how we proceed with the. Retaining, I stated my observations and my reports. You may know that he's been here on a. An occasion.
Did you supply the board with the the pre-existing condition photos of retaining wall and and?
I've ordered to supply.
Okay. Can we get a copy of those pictures?
Yeah, we have the pictures that we provided by. Speaking with Mike Andrew, because he never saw the wall before prior to. Project starting, he can't make a determination whether that project had anything to do with the wall or not, so. It's basically gonna be left in the plan, we retain on.
The planning board's gonna need. Pre-existing condition photos and.
So I always say, three blast survey that was done. Courtesy.
Yep.
Adjacent properties.
Yep.
Um. Yes, that retain well may have deteriorated as a result of. Two years that we've been here. But not likely a result of what he's claiming it to be. We have blast surveys and a few other, so we're prepared to stand, stay the course. As you know, we're a good neighbor, I live in a glass house and. I treat people fairly.
Hmm.
Dealing with other things, so. And guidance you can help on that front would be appreciated, and we'll, we will take direction.
Okay, how about the driveway in the neighbor next door?
Progress, obviously, it's, um, yeah, so between Steve and Shelley, uh, we did some geo probes, so her. Retaining walls adjacent to a septic system that requires. That investigation, we did three geo probes with Sam Boardhead, uh, two days ago. And those results will determine what we did for retaining.
Okay.
And that work, we had hoped to finish by June thirtieth. I'm not far off from that.
Okay. Okay, and that's not included in this. Um. Instructor, instruction.
Bond know this, it's something that's. Except for the offsite work that they've chosen to do, this is all the onsite work or anything related to the onsite.
So our, our documentation for temporary certificate of occupancy would include punch lists, items and work to be done. Specifically. Those two properties.
Okay.
And we have the punches that we attach to the DOT's punch list. Which is ongoing, um. A requirement for the town for T O, uh, T O, TCO is sign up from the highway department. We don't comply with that because we're on. State roads.
Hmm.
DOT has a timeline, it doesn't line up for this. Uh, we act performance, the light goes on, the light signals operating right now, they need a month for that to burn in. So we'll, we have that as a punch this item to be attached to it as, to be completed.
Good.
As in regards to. Uh, retainage on all our subcontractors are very strong. On that front. In regards to people moving in. Really, they're gonna be moving into the front office bump. And it might be a group of sixteen to twenty. Um, sporadically. As the back of the house operations continue. Substantial completion date, which would be in full alliance. Not fully functional. Is July, is, excuse me, September twenty second. So it gives us um. Benefic- beneficial occupancy to the extent that the building is safe, functional. Uh, protected by fire, we're going through our final testing now. This last ninety days has been very active with town officials, buyer, building. And third-party consultants, so we feel we're in a good position. Really, not just for TCO, but for substantial. Really, not just for T C O, but for substantial completion at this point in time, which is asking.
Okay, so full turn over to Amazon, you said in September-ish.
September twenty second is our deliverable date, if not sooner.
Okay.
That said, they're still testing with the equipment and everything.
Yep.
Robotics to be said.
Take some time for them to build up.
Take some time. We will still also be here on site overseeing that.
Okay.
And and this request is for. Occupancy for the entire. Building. So we're running over six hundred people right now.
Right.
And we're occupying the building.
Yeah, yeah.
Back of the house is there's six hundred people and then there'll be sixteen people from.
But it's not just a portion of the building.
Oh, no, it's for the entire thing. Yeah, so we're fully protected in phases. Alarm. Diesel fire pumps come on, electric fire pumps come on, everything's performing, elevators recall. This is all the verification testing that we're doing with Harrington Blue. It's yeah. Uh, it is supported by Justin Hughes, which is the town's third party. So.
How about some of the the soiled nails and retention? The walls.
We're two thirds of the way through that. We're at the front right now. The work is progressing.
Yeah.
We anticipate that to be completed by the end of this.
They may not have included that in that.
We had reference to that as well as landscaping.
Is it in here?
Yep. There are things in there that also have been eliminated.
Yeah.
Sound walls and a few other things, but that said, it was a very comprehensive, detailed. List. And while I think the values have that. It doesn't matter what. So that's. That's a fair number.
Once again, this is pre done when she.
I'm not arguing the cost, I, you know, I I. I commend the effort. There's a lot of time that went into that and a lot of thought that went into that.
Okay. Before, will it be a determination from this land? That's between three houses that. Will this work be completed? They would give their situation.
Yes.
Yeah. So. Whenever Grace comes up with the for the. For the water back here.
Whatever he comes up with. Yeah. Soon as he comes up, I will jump on it, whether.
Where it was.
Yeah. Or I just, yeah, right.
And then so the three things would be the. The. Water in the back.
Water.
The center. The stairway, the front stairs.
The stair.
And driveway. The driveway, front stairs and the.
In the front retaining wall?
Well, I mean, I think we need to discuss that. We need to discuss that, so that's, I mean, that's.
I'd like.
So on the next meeting, maybe we can add that to our our next meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, agenda to discuss the the.
I stop.
Last story here.
Spawned. West. West.
The property on sixty six.
Joe.
What his mediation?
What is the scope of what he's talking about? So there are improvements that I'm gonna do for him. That I don't contest. Stand firm, I'm gonna see on my observations with regard to the.
Yeah, I mean, we we did look for retaining also, they did his in just repair and it's probably ten years past its. It's their life.
The estimate. The board, I have no influence on the board, so I said.
We'll discuss it and we can make points in it.
Pretty easy to go back.
Nah, you wouldn't be able to see it. Sure, really good Google. But we do have pictures, like I said, though. Can can.
If so, like sixty forty.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have. So we will have pre blast photos, so you'll you'll send those out or you already have.
Yeah, I actually have one on right from the house. That in that the the first photo that we received, wasn't that a pre glass glass photo?
Yeah, they're about sixty forty.
Yeah.
Job specifically. Other areas of concern as well.
The printouts are usually pretty tough to look at if you don't load those.
I bring in my photo printing.
They're pretty, they're pretty clear. Okay, so we'll add that to the agenda for next our next meeting in June, July time.
Separate issue.
So it was a separate issue. That's all right.
Yeah, my objective.
But we'll we'll take care of that. Yes, we can take care of this tonight.
Okay.
If we found out the actual line, I mean. Actually present to you.
One hundred percent.
See it, yeah.
Got it done before September.
Yes.
One hundred percent.
Okay.
Good to conduct.
Look, yeah, but we haven't discussed that as a as a board yet, so. Okay. Um. Any action on this? Do we have a motion? Mother approve the site, um.
I'll I'll make a motion to take action on the site's surety bond, water bay development, Sturridge Road to accept their surety bond estimates.
On raise on January.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a we have a motion in a second. Um, all those in favor? I, I. I. Unanimous. Thank you.
Good luck to you.
And also to you in there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good night. Good day.
Thank you too.
Thank you.
All right. Um, so let's try that again. A public hearing continued for G M Properties LLC, the villages multi-family units at thirty five North Main Street. Uh, thirty five dash C nine. The C dash nine on the accessory map. Um. Wait, can you introduce yourself and let us know who you are?
Uh, I'm James Tedro from Asmit Land Design. We're representing the owner and applicant, G M Properties LLC. Is this an okay position for? Uh.
I.
Send yourself?
Yep, yep, I think that's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Um. Property in question is at thirty five North Main Street. The existing house stands for the moment. Uh, in this location right here. The property is, uh, has frontage along L Stevens Road. And North Main Street and center of it is just about opposite H Platinum, uh, hitting hitting North Main Street. Again, it's six point one seven acres, bounded on this point that you see before you by the blue line. And the site, uh, previously was the subject of a filing in regard to wetland determination on this map. That function maybe is a little thicker. Uh, there's a wetland line, wetland running through the center of this property. This property receives runoff from. Uh, as far, uh, to the north as Route twenty, doesn't get any of the actual Route twenty discharge, but the property is immediately there. Forget how I should refer to the property immediately, uh, to the side of the, uh, C V S, but. That property and others there drain through here, uh, to, uh, this site all drains to a culvert on Real Stevens Hill here. So two culverts. Site is presently just that existing house and a little bit of yard around it. The rest of the site is wooded. The site is in the village zoning district. Uh, which seeks to promote, uh, some greater density of development. Uh, in area in in areas near the town center. Um, and again, L Stevens here, we're just a, on this scale, we're we're a little ways over by the by by the board. Um, what the applicant is proposing, uh, are a total of forty units on two, uh, new drives. Nicholas Drive would have an entrance onto L Stevens Road. Uh, and you can go all the way out to, uh, North Main Street near the north end of the property. Old Lane would have an entrance onto L Stevens Road and we just, uh, go up to the north. Uh, utilizing the upland areas over here. Um, the roads, uh, that's actually a result. That title, or the half step. Uh, we filed this and we had, uh, the view by Graves Engineering. We sent in. This, uh, plan that you have is a revised version dated April twenty sixth, uh, in response to the Graves Engineering review. Um, these units. Are, um, you know, the. Village zoning district seeks to have housing without. Um, minimizing, actually, I guess I would say the the. Uh, visibility of cars and driveways. All of these units here. Uh, facing North Main Street would have, uh, doors and sidewalks out to, uh, a new walk along North Main Street. Uh, but they would only have vehicular access, only garages in the back. Um, the other units away from the road would have, uh. Garages entering off these drives, but the ones facing the road here would only have garages in the back. Um, again, there'd be no individual garages onto L Stevens either. Um, so the site. Uh. We'd be altering about two point five acres of this six point one seven acre site. Uh, we would not alter any wetlands. We actually just had the applicant, uh, sign the, uh, um. Application form for an extension tent will be submitting that ASAP. Again, we previously had a determination of the boundaries of wetlands on site. That's what's reflected. Uh, on this plan, but that was solely a determination of the boundary of the wetland. It wasn't obviously a. File and little intent and proposed work. But we're not proposing to alter any of that wetlands that was previously determined. We are in a few spots, uh, getting in within the twenty five foot boundary that town asks you to try and stay out of and. Uh, we're gonna offer some mitigative measures to the commission that we all would make this a worthwhile trade off from their point of view. Um, just not to get too deep into the con con stuff. One of those is, uh. The sites along Route twenty especially, I think, have, uh. Let a lot of, uh, dark silt. Get to this culvert and sort of fill up the the area in front of this culvert. And we would take that out, we would do an invasive species management plan and some other things. Uh, to we believe make it a a worthwhile, uh, uh, trade off from the size ratio commissions point of view, but. Again, we have to make that filing. They'd have to, you know, have to take input from. Um. I would note just quickly that, uh, water service would be from extending, uh, the existing main and L Stevens in both cases. Uh, sewer service, uh, all the units, uh, off of Nicholas Drive. Would, uh, connect to gravity sewer that is gonna go out to just off the sheet here, which is off the property. Uh, the existing, uh, sanitary sewer in at at the intersection, I should say, of L Stevens and North Main. Uh, the units, uh, over here would pump via U one units against that same connection to the existing sanitary sewer. Uh, at the intersection of L Stevens and North Main. Um. So just note quickly as far as drainage. Uh, you know, I, as I said, there's, uh, a large drainage area offsite coming through here. We would have a series of, uh, small infiltration basins. There are actually four of them total, one here, here, and here and one here, uh, to deal with, uh, drainage. We would have. And again, appearing a little con con wise, but we would, uh. And we actually did send this into Graves that, so it's sort of been covered. Uh, we sent in the stormwater report checklist showing that we're. Achieving the ten store management standards of D E P. Uh, onsite and, uh, the drainage, uh, works because. Our infiltration structures help and this site is. The runoff from this site is is massively smaller than the old drainage area further north of it out to Route twenty. Um. And so, uh. We have, we have a decrease in drainage to the culverts under L Stevens Road. Again, we have water. Uh, uh, from to both drives from L Stevens. We have sewer connecting out to the existing sewer. In North Main at the intersection with L Stevens. Uh, I just note, uh. Parenthetically, we, you know, we've run traffic numbers. If you look at, uh, forty units of multifamily low rise. And you look at the official I T E charts, you get, uh. A number that in the morning and evening peak hours, you're basically gonna have a new car. Additional car above the background existing traffic every three minutes. Uh. It's it's about eighteen or twenty two cars. In the morning and evening peak hours, so it's it's obviously it's not a significant. Uh, uh, traffic.
That's there's way more cars. You go down L Stevens Road during that time, it's it's steady non.
No, no, we're we're not saying that there's not existing traffic. We're saying that by the official.
Just gonna add some more.
Yes. Like the official numbers.
It's already there.
There are official numbers as to how you're supposed to calculate what a site will generate, and those numbers show a relatively modest, uh, increase.
Three trips per minute.
No, no, it, I'm just adding, just quick, uh, it's every three minutes, another car.
Oh, one, one.
In the morning, in the morning peak hour, the numbers work up to being eighteen and change trips in the morning peak hour. It's it's. What you worked on was point four six, uh, uh, trips. Uh, per unit, forty times point four six is eighteen and change. Um, again, so that's a little over three minutes between each new car being added. And in the evening peak hour, in the official numbers, say point five, six, we run the numbers, it's twenty two and change. Again, effectively bounding to about every three minutes, another car that's going in or out.
Eighteen, twenty two.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the the traffic impacts are relatively modest.
And what what do you think that is? Twenty five percent of existing background or?
I I don't have the numbers to say what the, uh, existing capital. Gentlemen here thinks thinks it's it's a relatively small increase as a percentage, but.
Yeah.
But I don't know.
Make sure that that shows his point.
Um, so. Uh, you know, we're gonna comply with all of the, uh, required, uh, zoning for the village district. Um, you know, minimum ten thousand square feet where this is two hundred and sixty eight thousand. Way in excessive frontage sites and setbacks, building coverage allowed is six sixty percent. This is would be a total of nine percent. Uh, maximum building height allowed, one thirty six, we're, uh, uh, calling for twenty five. Um, you know, we're easily meeting all of the village zoning district requirements. Um, I think the impacts of of traffic are relatively minor. There's existing utilities there. We still have to file with the Concom, but we're not. Uh, touching the wetland as previously delineated by the commission. Um, so we we think that, uh, the impacts of the project. Uh, are reasonable for the for the site and the overall context, but I'll I'll try and answer any questions that you have and and.
There's a, there's a lot to go through with this, Doug.
Yes.
Yeah, but so we'll try to get just so many questions. Any any questions from the the board?
There. So thanks, nice plan. Thanks for all the details of this, Pedro. So you're not encroaching on wetlands. The only enclosure I see is within the twenty five foot. Boundary and and just in that one place and it looks like.
It's in a couple places. Um, it's at the edge here as well.
Well, the initial grave is great support means. On February. Eight or something like that.
That's.
You've done an addition, so you've made some changes.
And and we sent them back and I I guess he hasn't had time to finish in this.
Um. So as the sewage goes, have you spoken with the the sewer department and is there capacity for? The additional.
Uh, we have, we had some initial discussions with them, but I guess we should get a letter from them absolutely confirming that to the board.
How much of this property, what percentage of this property is is upland?
Uh, who? Okay, I have that number. I would guess you're looking at roughly, uh. Somewhere in the ninety to fifty fifty. Again, what I'm running my hand over is is wetland. Um.
So it's.
That's sort of wider than the upland on either side of it, but there's. Do it out. So, but I can get to that now.
So any, um. Zooming requirements that that require a certain amount of upland. To be not built upon or is it just a lot? Lot size, so. I mean. We kind of need to look at.
Special.
Yeah, yeah.
I guess I I don't believe there are such requirements, but I'll look into it also.
Yeah, I mean, look at the impervious. Part of the with the property and how much of that is being used. Um, water flow going. Into the wetlands from that runoff, where's? This.
Uh, sir, there's multiple points of discharge. Uh, for instance, the beginning of the street is going through, uh, catch basin, stream and hole, C D S unit for stormwater filtration. Two in in in-ground infiltration structure and we're discharging to a riprap splash pad here. Uh, I. Part of the, uh, drive before that. Part of the uh drive before that, again, catch basins, drain and hole, C D S stormwater filter unit. In ground infiltration. I would let him to a rip rap splash pad again, and the same thing, the largest part of the driveway. Is going to, again, catch basins, drain and hole, C D S unit, uh, to the largest infiltration structure here. Uh, that's gonna discharge that same rip rap rip rap splash pad. And we show uh. On multiple points, you also see where, for instance, the roof runoff from uh this block of units is to discharge. To a rip rap splash pad. This one also separately discharged to a rip rap splash pad. This one also. Um, so we're breaking it up into multiple pieces. Because there's not a single large area where you would make one big opening or detention basin. Like this was described, all of these. Every such area, for instance, the roof of of this built this block of units is described. In particular as its own subcatchment in the drainage report. And you know, discharging here and then its flow path. Out to that's the design point of that culvert, and that's what what's happening with all these. So it's. The drainage report is uh on the predevelopment side is actually very simple. It's. Seventy plus acres draining through to the culvert under L Stevens. On the post development side, it's it's more complex because this is one separate area study. And then it flows out to here. This is a separate area, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and that was again kind of forced on us by uh just the nature of the site with. Again, as you were discussing, a large part of it being wetlands in the center. And the upland sort of being divided on two sides. But I think. I think actually there were a couple of issues that. I think Graves had with the initial drainage report. Uh, but I don't. I think we have addressed those. I'm sure their, you know, subsequent review will will confirm that, I believe.
Has Kurt looked over these plans and provided any comments from that?
Yes, he did actually. It's in there was a mark.
It's probably yes, yes, somewhere in here.
They have a sidewalk down L Stevens.
Uh, actually, on the revised plans now, there is not at this moment, I tell the revised plans, that was one of the requests uh of Graves Engineering that we connect. These two driveways with sidewalk. And that is reflected on the plans data for plans next.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's the point.
And and I I mentioned it briefly, but. I I I mentioned it briefly, but one of the other things being added here is a sidewalk all across. The applicant's property here.
And and don't we have? Uh, isn't there current plans to add sidewalk down the east street? To the CBS location, man, is that? Is that part of the plans?
Yeah, that's that is direct and actually. Um, one discussions right now of. How this can be handled with the. This, this, we're discussing. The the new sidewalk. Uh, regulations the town had provided that. It was the typically sidewalks are on the property. In this particular project, with sidewalks on the property would be very close to the homes. And also the neighboring property is actually. If anybody's worried, this foundation is in, it's gonna be two duplex.
Yeah, that was something that was approved.
So the, yeah, well, that, yeah, that's. But the building inspector meets zoning, but the sidewalk would have a jog in it. So the idea is to put it out in the road right away. Um. In front of the properties on this particular project, so connect to the next property. And have a nice straight sidewalk down that side of North Main Street.
I I would just note that there's a portion of it that straddles, the sidewalk straddles the line. Uh, but as as Randy says, uh, a good portion of the 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 greater majority is actually in the right way.
Five feet the whole way.
Correct.
And five feet up all Stevens, same.
Uh, I feel so, yes, so that's why, uh, I agree.
And you already spoke with CONCON and they've provided their feedback and.
We have not. We we've spoken to the CONCON agent, she's aware of this uh filing uh coming. Uh, we are actually just about to file. So our our intention tonight, we understand, you know, there's there's much work to do, but we wanted to get. Feedback from the board and audience and. In combination with filing with the commission and then getting feedback from the commission. Be able to make, well, hopefully one set of revised plans addressing all the concerns. And and have that done.
Is there any type of lighting?
Uh, yes, I. For instance, I, as I look quick, I find a light right over here. Find a light right over here. Look for sort of a little uh sun symbol almost circle with radiating lines out from it. We just tried to pick uh reasonable locations like there's a light proposal. Correct, if yeah, I'm facing and that that sort of is. Was it open spy, open sky compliant?
And the, Mr. Petro, the drainage report that you worked in was it?
Yeah.
Basically, this sheet, these sheets were the calculations.
Oh, no, no, it's a, it's a. It's a forty page separate uh documents. Steal over at the table, seeing if it's.
Oh, no, it's actually over here, but we do have.
We have. Anyway, can we look at the two ten twenty five and hundred year storms, you heard the Noah. Eight falls. Charlton. The, I could get at these numbers. It's it's like an eight inch rainstorm in the. There is, it's a giant storm.
And and all of these uh drainage basins are underdrowned? Are there any above ground?
Correct, they're they're, again, there are four. Infiltration structures both. One, uh, Nicholas Drive near the entrance off of Lee. You know, Stevens, uh, second one here, a third one here, uh, and one, uh, by over way over here.
If no additional surface uh drainage basin at all or?
Correct, yeah, correct. Again, it's just a really amount of space.
And how about like snow uh storage and?
Um. I think we indicated that especially to try on going off of the uh saddle and parking expenses and also. Areas uh off of the units and and where there was significant uh space between. Get off the drive here. There are, there are some reasonable spots uh that won't be an impediment to sightlines of drivers.
Now, I ask, what what's the proposal for heating and cooling? What's the source of fuel these things, please?
Turn of the gentleman over your right shoulder, who is George Markopolis, principal of GM Properties?
So he pumps. Any solar? Batteries are. So which is required.
And just uh quickly, I knew you mentioned lighting always combining a gentleman who who does the lighting plans for the lighting analysis. To him, we get also the landscaping plans. You know, we've got a landscaping plan in the set with, you know, proposed seventy trees and a hundred and thirty one. Uh, shrugs mixed throughout the site. In addition to the, you know, the lawn that's and uh landscaping that's going to be the last. Uh, I think it'll be a very attractive uh uh setup and uh. Um, if it could be a, the private to be a a nice. Credit to the town would be a. Something that, something that the board will will be able to, uh, the board members won't have to uh. Mumble under their breaths that they were on the board when that was approved.
So what are the size of each units and the height and number stories?
Uh, I don't, yeah, for your shoulder.
There'll be two stories, there'll be. Two stories at garage level and then plus one, plus two, plus two. Those three stories in the back. Does the intention to sell these units or these to be rental properties? These are just strictly rental properties. The other questions from the board, you can open them public for for comments and we will be continuing with tonight's. Yep, no, I'd like to open up to the public for any comments or your questions or or issues. Actually, there's plenty.
My neighbors and I have quite a few concerns on this project. Start off with this. Probably ten options on here. Um, first of all is the traffic. When L Stevens, which. Um. Undenounced to a lot of people in town has become a major cut through. In Charlton. Um, we have major commercial vehicles, major. Traffic from probably five AM. Till about seven PM at night. Um. There are people going eighty miles an hour down this road. I have documented calls with the police office about how fast. Go down the road. Um, I actually had to put up a fence along my property and give me some sort of sound barrier. Uh, whereas when I moved in in twenty twenty, I had. Zero traffic one way.
There was no traffic in twenty twenty.
Probably two years and or move by one, twenty twenty two. Um, but. People fly down the road and there are noticeable blind spots on the road. Um. There, that was one of the. Thus of another, um. And to the point where they can't even back out anymore. Because people fly down the road, can't pull out. It's a major. Safety issue, so adding two other outlets onto this road. Is a real huge concern. You also can't even make a left turn. Straight, the turn is so sharp. So adding an immediate left turn and then another driveway only amplifies the problem. But if you have anybody coming out of that road, Nicholas Drive, you know. They'll, you know, you might say they might turn onto North Main Street because that's where the light is. They're all gonna turn left and they're gonna go to L Stevens, that's a cut through, which only will add. More, um. And really make a dangerous intersection. Um. That wetland area and I know we have a bunch of drainage systems, but. With the snow and the ice melt and everything, so rental properties, I don't anticipate. Care of them as well as. You know, people who may own the building, so trash. Ice melts, other substances will go into that weapons. Um. It's a major flooding area behind my house. Wetlands and I see that area expanded. Uh, so I'm wondering. And I don't know the process on this, how, when the last time that property. Or wetlands, what the markings were for that, maybe that was done, uh.
There were, so have you done recently?
The uh delineation uh was first agreed to two thousand nineteen and then the extended uh.
Um, and I know there's a sewer moratorium. Currently, um, so the addition of. Forty minutes, which you're gonna average. I don't know what you guys consider an average, but you say there's couples living with it. If there's families and you live at four people and they'll. Fix me. Um. I don't know what that looks like. Sewer addition and then you have to consider schools. We don't even have buses or half the kids in Charlton. At least the high school. Um, so how does that one impact? Our fire station right downtown is quite a mess. And I know we just, I know subdivision was approved, but. What, you know, a lot of the ambulances I've seen on Oldsboro, we have, there's a lot of considerations here. That's at least the ones right off the top of my mind.
And what, what exactly? Did somebody get an idea that we need all of this rental property in town? I mean, what she said, our schools are overloaded. We have all these issues. I don't understand the need for rental. I mean. The town decided to zone this land in the village district. And what we're proposing to do is compliant with the village district. Um, so, you know. I would defer it back to the the town deciding that this was a location for this type of housing.
But.
That's a, I'd say, actually, that's a great point, as I should have said. Uh, these would be remain private.
Oh, who's maintaining?
The owner, the owners. Yes.
How far are the apartments come? That's a question, the property line from thirty six. The ones directly. That means right there.
That's fifty feet from the property line. This house, by the way, is traced from the G I S. I I wouldn't think this is gospel to 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 say it's it's within a foot. I mean, it's probably within a couple feet of the exact location. You're relying upon the. Photography of whoever did this for the town, but that's sixty two feet.
And then directly from the border, like the the road, I mean, from that. See how the road comes right, like very close to the property.
Oh, it's just a couple feet off.
Right, and so are there any barriers or any sort of?
So many vegetation.
That that whole line.
The way this is colored is intending to show the gray as pavement. And the green right off of this is either landscaped or lawn. And what's untouched, for instance, all this, all this, this stuff is stuff left wooded.
I understand, I and I got that from where the green was. What I'm saying is, what is your plan in terms of?
Screening.
Screenings.
I'm gonna open it up because I get the landscape plan underneath.
Very, very close by. And lights, I mean, it's like we're getting a light right on that corner of the house. That's gonna shine directly into.
Hey, I mean, have to give you, during a second, he's got the landscape park, it's actually a symbol here. J is a white spruce tree. So five white spruce trees and five trees, which are. A blue spruce tree. Then. So so there are proposed plantings of spruces.
Only along that road or along that.
Around the entirety of the property line until you get to the the backyard of those uh units there.
In the six foot five.
I was, thank you, I was just gonna say that, um, this proposes. Put this down, second point. Um, this proposes a six foot high privacy fence. All on this property line from the corner here past these units and from the corner to L Stevens Road.
Is there any other uh? Press fee on that bar sign of being a forty?
Um, I'm gonna go back to this. Um. No, is it is intended that all this be left, would it? Be left in its its condition now, and that would be in the second. Um, about ninety feet of woods between the intended limit of the yard and the property line. They actually was one of the comments is that we should show uh ability for a fire truck to turn around. Uh, and we're looking at uh putting in a hammerhead turn around a couple spots either here. Uh, so that you can do it. Um. Or we could extend this and do it right beside the 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 unit. Um, that would end up. That would end up cutting some more trees, but that was one of the questions that had come up.
They will have to receive approval from the fire department for whatever they've built.
That's on this site?
Well, I don't know which, it's it's right on the property.
Oh, wait, well, I mean, nothing is to be touched on the property line. So if you've got, if you've got some shriv, if there are, I'm sorry, I'm not sure who is is which. Okay, sorry, I wasn't sure, this is the woman to your to your left. That's to be left alone. We're not, there's no intention, there's no need, there's no motivation to.
I'm just worried about clients, people. Been there twenty, almost twenty years. It's it's. Traffic is noisy now. Now we're gonna put people in their cars, in and out all night long, all day long. I just.
It's an understandable worry and and you know, the applicant is here and and we're not. We we want to make. This a, to be a hospitable neighbor, to be a good neighbor, and for the way this is done to be. Something that makes it reasonable for all of the existing residents.
Would you consider not putting?
That's that's probably beyond the line of.
Yeah, so we thought we were gonna have. My my biggest concern is that there's a lot of wildlife in the area.
To talk about that, because it went to their house over across the street. Yeah, it really wanted them out.
And then the driveways, right on the curve there, that's a dangerous curve, people coming down around that curb. People pulling out.
There's still a lot of work to do on this.
The other one, that's on a slope. My son went into a tree right there.
Have you spoken to the police department about putting the crills in there?
They were very, very responsive in doing so.
Since they paved it, it probably made it worse.
It tells everybody to do that now.
Every truck driver who was accounting, Google to that, where are we gonna go? Makes them avoid the way.
So it's not an issue for this, but it's.
Oh, making that straight.
The the board of selectmen, I would sit.
Well, actually, I was directed to the chief of police.
So the chief of police can recommend it to the board of selectmen. Yeah, I would, I would get in touch with.
Administrator, the town administrator.
Get in touch with with Andrew, the town administrator and maybe.
So he advises, but it's the board of selectmen who have to vote on that. I would send an email to to document it and and they would, and they'll put you on the agenda.
So the conservation committee is the one you talk to to deal with anything about the weapons.
They they'll either go physically, they'll have their own consultants, but this will.
Because I have the pond. I have the pond on my property and it runs under the street across and it goes down together. Yeah, yes, exactly.
There there's a little bit of overlap in 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 the conservation commission, the planning board issues, in that the planning board also reviews drainage. As does the conservation commission. And the conservation commissions specifically focus on is on the wetlands, erosion issues and the the quality of runoff. More so than than the planning board, that's their specific purview. But but both really do look at drainage.
Know how it's gonna, the pipe goes out of my pond under the, because when they just redid the road. They had, they put all the piping in and went and it goes under through there, yeah, over there.
So just to see if you're familiar with the process is they submit an application to this board. We hire consultants. Engineers to go over their plans, make recommendations, make changes, show where their problems are, show where the issues are, look at the town bylaws, zoning bylaws. Provide all that information back and it's gonna be back and forth in a while. They also need to cut talk to conservation. Get enough from them and it's looks like they still have a lot of work there to do.
You will get, anybody within a hundred feet of the property will get a certified mailing notice. But you will also get one for the conservation.
Also, they go through highway, they go through the the building commissioner, looks at everything. Fire apartment, it pretty much goes to all the offices in the town hall, it gets multiple levels. It doesn't, it isn't just.
So this is a process, especially with development, this is this is tight in the village district, so. In in lieu of timing, we are gonna continue this to a follow on meeting. If there's just a couple of comments before we continue, one last, one last question.
What's the?
I don't think that you can. Prevent that, I mean, if you can't prevent it, so if if an application came through and and. With the section eight approval and and voucher, you would prevent them, so.
It's sexy, yeah.
But it's not dedicated, it's not.
Low income housing in Charlton would be as you might perceive it because it's based. Low income housing in Charlton would be like you might perceive it because it's based on the median income in the county. So.
It's I mean, what, if if someone does this, this is not at all what this is. But you might have ever heard of a thing called a chapter forty B development where some where some units have to be affordable. When you actually run the numbers, it is shocking. You can make, you can, you can make, you can, a family of four can make seventy five thousand dollars. Qualify for affordable housing. So a lot of times people think of. Those things as being, again, you use the term section eight housing, and they're really quite different, but this isn't going to be either of those.
It's beautiful apartment. I have section eight.
And in Charleston too, we don't have a lot of access to public transportation, which is severe.
Although this is, this is on the public, it's on the bus route, so this kind of.
A lot of the buildings are far more spaced out.
Chairman, I guess we should ask you to continue. And I don't know what your timing is on your meetings, because I was gonna say if your next meeting is like two weeks out, I think we need to ask for the one after that.
July, I mean, the date is July tenth, we only have one meeting in July and August. August meeting is August seventh.
I I I guess tentatively, I'd like to ask to continue to that meeting and and if it turns out, timing wise, it doesn't work, we will. Try and request as early as possible.
Please do request as early as possible so that people have at least some notice that.
Yeah, it's it's not sitting on the agenda the day before.
Or the hour before.
Has that just happened? Is that from a sort of a balcony levels?
Obviously, this back. Yeah, that's a good question. Is is this specifically for these units or is this for another?
To me, it's gonna be.
No, you know, you're right, you get elevation views addressing each circumstance of of where the entrance is and which floor.
And so let's get better better elevations and the right. Right addresses and 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 show each block accordingly. This is just, looks like just an example that doesn't look accurate.
Point taken.
Okay, motion to continue this public hearing to June tenth. And it's currently scheduled for seven ten. So we have a motion, sorry.
I'll make a motion to continue since July tenth.
Second. So let's have a vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye. Aye, have it.
Okay, thank you for your time, we'll see you.
Thank you, folks, for coming, thank you.
If you have any concerns about the web. See, they have the power to. Control what's done.
I absolutely love, I have.
Every developer. Goes as far as they can in conservation.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's honestly. Two year old and a five year old.
I've been down L Stevens with somebody raid on, you know, I'm trying to. Yeah, you put in some manmade pathos, bring it back to what it was, it's slower, everybody.
Mostly, and it should be limited to.
I honestly just had a well company, I don't know if they were coming from any. The duplexes over the, which which I have no problem with, I think, because those are houses, there's bigger, there are people that are owning the property. But I think there's a well truck and. I thought it was probably like right beyond my property, it was just turning down L Stevens, the noise was so loud. And it wakes my kids up, like, we've had, my my sound machine has gone on for overnight, like. Everything's gone up, they keep waking up, and so it's like, I call the police, they've been very responsive, but the no commercial vehicles and. Just keeping.
Stopping in is free, but it's really going to have.
You can do that.
And it's pretty receptive of.
Special.
Joyce can't back out. It's the blind spot over the hill at her house, it's just. And people, it's crazy.
So we've got a few public hearings that look like they're gonna be continued, is that right? Public hearing, ZP Battery Development, Battery Energy Storage Systems, Two Idiots, Stop the Drill, continue to July tenth.
Make motion to continue the Two Idiots, Stopbridge Street, ZP Battery Development Company to July tenth.
We have motion and second, all those in favor? Yeah, please, that's fine.
Make motion to continue the public hearing for Curtis Hill Estates. Till for New Spencer Road until July tenth meeting.
Motion and second, all those in favor, say aye. Like unanimous.
Make motion to continue the. Stone reduced frontage lot, Gale Road for the July tenth meeting.
Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. One more.
Make make a mo- make a motion to.
So this is an extension for the warehouse, distribution facility, site permit, Charlton Developer LLC for two forty one Sturridge Road. Extension on the special permit and site plan to seven fourteen twenty twenty five. Do we have motion?
Make motion to to extend the. Permit for Charlton Developer LLC at two forty one Sturridge Road until next year, July fourteen twenty twenty five.
Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye, aye. Make motion to extend the request for White Development Corporation at. For Tucker Farm Estates definitive subdivision till next year, July fourteen twenty twenty five.
Motion and second, all those in favor?
Just a question, is this being built?
Is this gonna go on forever and ever?
The White Development. Generally, they're marketing it and they do have a potential buyer for a couple, but they came back five blocks. They have a potential buyer, whether it's gonna happen, we don't know, but.
Other business unknown at time of posting.
I say I have one thing that came up at the end of today to. End of the day today. Rob Lemansky is requesting a permanent CO on the building that has been recently constructed on. Worcester Road is now the veterinarian place. He did put up a bond for the site work similar to what Amazon did. However, that is for temporary CO and I'm concerned that we'll run into a. Similar situation with him was, you know, that to make, you know, to hold everybody to the same standards, whether we should be. Allow the permanent CO to be issued before the site work is complete. And now, I mean, that's the opinion of us here on the staff, myself and the building inspector, but because. It's a planning board application, I just wanted to run it past the board.
Once they get the CO, I mean, then we've got no.
Yeah, it it could sit there forever without the site work being completed. So we can start collecting brand. I mean, essentially. He put the top coat on, now we just got some. Trees and, you know, it's more landscaping work than anything else, so you get to complete. Yeah, there's no re, you know, he did do the top coat, of course, there's no way. With just a base coat on the parking lot that he would allow a permanent CO, so he did that. And that's actually the greatest part of the expense for. That project. So. He's really not that far off, he's just rushed, 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 you know. So he's really not that far off. He's just rush, 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 you know, they put everything off to the last second. And then want to, you know, get CEO now, worry about the rest, rest later. Yeah, if we keep it consistent, then we won't. Have issues, you know, anybody else in the future or any.
Has Graves been out there to to look at what's remaining there or or just?
Yeah, well, that's how we came up with the number. It worked, so. Late this afternoon, I I guess he approached Kurt Maschus. And in order to get a CEO, I have to sign it up. From the planning board standpoint, if you post a bond, then. That we do that for a temporary CEO without the permanent CEO. It's he's trying to get a permanent CEO.
Didn't notice it.
Yeah, so. The planning board say no, they're not gonna offer. Yeah. Oh, because he he. He put up cash for the difference of what he had to do for the parking lot and everything. The town actually has its. Right, and so we, the planning board say no, they will not authorize me to sign off on the building department for the CEO. Until the site work is complete, then.
Is Kurt even signed off on it?
No.
But he can't sign off.
Kurt won't sign off it until everybody else does.
Money which isn't done yet, so.
It's not a distrust issue, it's a standards.
Yeah, this project is it's insignificant, a model work that he has to do too, so.
Uh, so let's let's do this. Let's put it on the agenda for the tenth. Um, and if he wants to come in and talk to us about it, we can, we can believe, don't really ask us, but we can't take any action. Or if we put it on for August, it should. So, okay, we can't take actual, thank you.
I mean, this building's been complete for a while. The people wait till the last second to get CEO. Considering you have the tax burden, you know, your taxes go up and everything else, so.
Okay, it's. Um, so did we agree on dates for the summer? I don't know if you're talking, you talked to each other, um, July tenth and August seventh?
Yeah, that's a, that's a poking meeting date. For the summer.
That work for you? You're not where? Okay, that work for, that work for everybody?
Yeah, if there's an issue, we could change the date.
The tenth works good for me. I I'm unavailable for the two weeks after that.
You see stuff on the horizon that's gonna be so.
The stuff that we're currently working on, there's nothing coming. Down the pipe that we're gonna like have to deal with right away, so. For the sale, I know the Trump gets a bit there. They're their own worst enemy. They keep pulling themselves up. They want to come to midnight and I said, you do what? You haven't submitted revised plans, so.
Yeah, so, so, uh, wouldn't we. Expect something back from Graves for the villages, North Main Street?
Yeah, well, you know, fear and it's my huge eating into drains plan is still last month.
Yeah, 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 okay, I'm not, I'm not, yeah, no. He's been pretty busy with Amazon and everything else in town, so I I I fully understand it. My guess is they'll probably wanna continue that because I don't think they're they're gonna be ready.
Very nice to put that one.
Is I just wanna ask a quick question. I was, actually, I was here about Curtis Hill again. I'm interested, uh, one thing, um, I've been thinking of different things, uh. When this finally does start.
Curtis Hill?
Yeah. I would like to make sure that there's no construction vehicles using Curtis Hill Road.
Actually, that's a good point.
Um, number one, like you say, the net road is gonna be a narrow or just in the.
Yeah, sure.
Before we, this, and like I said, I think it was three or four years ago, a school bus was getting head on by coming down the hill.
Look, look.
And, uh.
We can definitely.
You know, I mean, I'm not trying in in, um. Yeah, cuz if if they can do it, they're gonna do it, you know, and I know it and and, uh. I was gonna ask something else, I probably remember, uh. So you you're gonna put that up to July tenth?
Um, it was continued again until July tenth, so, uh, whether it could, whether it happens then or not, I don't know.
Yes.
They make it continued again. And did you sit through the whole meeting just for that or did you just enjoy?
Well, I I enjoy listening to it, but I was. You know, when you cancel that, so I'm here this later.
Okay, I mean, when you come in, you can always check to see if it's gonna, it's gonna go in. Or call before, yeah.
It just, and the other thing you probably all know, but the. The service is Saturday at church. I I know, uh. I know my wife's supposed to be a pallbearer, cuz I guess she had no family and stuff. It's big loss.
Well, see, yeah, she doesn't have a lot of family here, but she's got a lot of friends.
Yes, she does, she really does.
You have any interest in being on the planning board?
I was listening to you just say that, um, I don't know, I have a lot of experience at it. Um, I read a lot. I was, um. I've been in the automotive industry, I've read junk guys up, oh, on Eastern Coast. I was on the hazardous waste committee here back in the nineties when it first formed. If there was stuff I could read, and I don't wanna be a hindrance to somebody.
Uh, we've got an opening for all of this, which which would be, you know, might be interesting for you, just to attend the meetings and.
Yeah, it is always a learning curve that people aren't familiar.
I've I've learned a lot in the last two months of different, you know. I mean, listening how somebody proposes something and how something is done and and, uh. You guys got a tough, you know.
Everybody has different backgrounds, so they ask different questions based on, you know, just whatever. Whatever comes to their mind, so it's it's way to have.
Well, that's why I asked when they said they talked to people on the street and and, you know. He said, I didn't, nobody gave them my. And not that it is, I mean, it's not a problem.
And and he can tell us whatever he wants, whether he did it or not. We don't know unless somebody shows up here and says, listen, I'm unhappy with this, and that's kind of what we go by is.
Yeah.
If something comes up in front of us and then none of the neighbors complaining about it and they all know about it, it's.
Re vacation time if we haven't used it. So what I would need, uh.
You gotta use your vacation time, Randy. Take some time off and relax, would you?
Yeah.
I'm a firm believer in using your vacation time every year.
So is that the, do those dates work for you? For the summer?
Was, yeah, that's fine.
When is the, the fiscal year is July?
What's that?
I said the fiscal year ends in July.
July third.
Is it just something you need from me or is this something with the time that?
Uh, you know, all year, it's department had the supervisor and technically the planning board is my supervisor, so.
Have you ever had a review? A formal review, no? We probably owe one. It's been six years, five years.
Five years today.
Not today.
Congratulations.
Remember your first interview?
Yeah. That's when I met Gene Benson. My gene and past the Duncan Donors.
So, uh, so. Does anybody have any problems if Randy, Randy rolls a week's vacation on to the following year? I I don't know. So.
The worst thing to do is.
Yeah, well, it's, I'm I'm unique. They, I mean, everybody else gets reviews. Well, I'm the like the only person who doesn't, so.
And you, do, do, how about Jane? Does she report to you? Does she report to, I guess she's part of the board, so she would report to you.
Yeah, Jane reports to me.
So you write her review?
Have you ever, you've you've never done a review for her either?
No.
I don't think Jane has ever.
Had a review?
How many, how many years?
I have to say, I don't have. I don't have any complaints about Jane.
You don't have any complaints, then, I assume that if you had a complaint, you'd address it with us. I think they say those for us too, so. Uh, but I don't know, maybe, maybe we could talk a lot if it is.
We do appreciate you giving us something, adding on the new stuff that's coming up. That's, that's awesome. It's gonna just, I know Ross, but maybe in here more than.
Yeah, let me know if you need anything from me. I work from home, so I'm fighting this on the road, I guess, I guess maybe if I need to.
So let's, can we put that on the agenda, um, at and just have a quick chat? Just because it's it's overdue and and I, you know, um. And and we'll see the selection also referred to it all the time too. Um, and I I think there was some, they wanted, they wanted to like, they. They were actually in the belief when I was a select, they got it was their responsibility. And I said, no, 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 the state actually says that the the planning board is. Like the authority of the master plan, so, uh, just if we could just start to follow. Um, and maybe put the other, uh, a committee or something or a subcommittee or something to just.
The E C wants to participate and probably other, you know.
So maybe this is something we can start in the fall.
Yeah.
Just so, because, because, you know, this is government, so if you don't talk a lot at three months ahead of time, starting in the fall into winter, right?
So what you, you were. Part of it before, so you were.
That I was actually on.
Is that carved in stone somewhere or?
Yeah. Yesterday.
Um, I'm still older than you, I'm sure. Um, so, um, yeah, okay, so we gotta, we gotta, we, we kinda have to discuss the process and and. How it comes about because.
Senior center and have big giant meetings and and all sorts of people, it was really, it's fun, fun process.
Would you like to chair that committee?
I would, I would love to be.
On the committee, would you chair it?
Yeah, it'd be interesting to see what the people in Charlton say now. I mean, last time from nine and seeing it was like. Primarily to keep Charlton as it was. And times are changing, so I wonder if people's attitudes are changing in Charlton.
Yeah. If you want me to put something on the the planning board page, I don't do so. Three years, was it four years, four years, three years. Um, there's something I could put on the planning board page and just to.
All right, well, I mean, you could push something out there and see if you, if you have any interest. And they please contact this office and we start a list and then I can tell them like, you know, we're hoping to start. Yeah, looking at this in the fall, you know.
Do we have a budget for snacks and beverages?
We do have a budget for.
Something to get people in there, I don't know.
See, you you need a strong.
Potato like passes.
But would it, would it be something that if started in the fall, if it's something to be ready for? Of the spring or?
Yeah, it it depends on how fast C M R P like. We have the budget, we have the budget for that, right? Because if we were given a budget, maybe. So we can, you can see, and there has to be a full up like R of P and everything, right, for that, so.
Yeah.
But so this.
Just C M R P C.
Yeah, well, C M R P C, you know, remember they did it, the bylaw, they can also do the master plan. John, yes.
Jane didn't go every week, but she went to some of the special things that were.
It's it's, it's not every single week.
No.
It's like once a month.
Yeah, I think it's once a month.
Are they still doing the, the, the yearly planning or the planning seminar?
Every time you go to a meeting, we get points, right? Every time someone shows up. We get recorded points which can be used for projects, so it's good to.
Okay. Oh, sorry, um. Once again, thank you guys for the honor and I'll try to do my very best. I need to shut up, tell me shut it, but I'll try to keep the meeting moving along to.
Yeah, I'll too, there's a lot. Lot to know. Do my best.
Oh, did everybody have an opportunity to sign, uh? Offered, sent for Jean.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Unanimous, thank you.